It's 3 o'clock. She's trying to call him. She's trying to call him.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I'm on the phone now.
Good afternoon, board members, administration, faculty, staff, and visitors. The time is six oh one on this, the thirteenth day of July, right? Twenty twenty-three, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Can I have Mr. Delgado say the prayer and Judge, are you up to the pledge of allegiance?
Uh, I'm totally yeah, and thank you very much.
Go ahead.
My name is Jer.
We're very happy to have you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, please rise.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and most importantly, our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and, most importantly, their confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
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 Judge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, and to the people whom we serve, and to those who live and die in our debt.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ramos, could you please call bro?
Yes, ma'am.
Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia?
Present.
Cindy Leando?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.?
Present by phone.
Thank you. Esteban Rajen?
Absent.
Absent. Karina Arizondo?
Absent.
Tita Cantubella? You have a quorum, ma'am. Thank you, but the records show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item, we have public testimony. Do we have any public testimony or not? Thank you. Uh, the next item, number four, introduction of new Laredo College Police Chief, Dr. Miniter Ramirez.
Madam Chair, may I ask that we, uh, delay, postpone item four? Our chief of police is on business. Okay, uh, he, at the point that he arrives, we'll, we'll bring this back up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Chair, recognize Mrs. Ramos.
I make a motion to, uh, move, uh, number four, introduction of new Laredo College Police Chief, uh, to... Mr. Muir?
You can move it to the end of the agenda and bring it back later.
Okay, the end of the agenda, ma'am.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, a second by Mr. Delgado. Any questions? Need discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is discussion and possible action. Five A, approval of updated organizational chart, Dr. Miniter Ramirez.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Um, we are making some adjustments to the, uh, organizational chart. We have made some, um, and they're highlighted in your packet and in yellow, those changes that we have made. Some are very tiny to see, I know, I'm sorry. Uh, and, uh, and others that are open positions that we're either posting or, um, uh, making available that are posted or open, or we're going to open at a later date. Um, we did, uh, hire a couple of new people, and we'll get to those when the time comes. We are requesting a new position in the, uh, Vice President for Finance and Administration. Uh, we're asking for an, an Associate Vice President for that, uh, particular area, and you can see that in the organizational chart, if you'll, um, in your packets, keep going, in, uh, Dr. Arias Solas, uh, and Vice President for Compliance and Risk Management. We have a, a movement, we've moved Title Nine into the compliance area for a, for purpose, because of the reporting required and because of the, uh, documentation required, and it is a compliance matter for us, and so we've, we've moved, uh, Miracca de Pena into that area, and then, of course, the new police chief, who you all will meet in a little while. Uh, under, um, Vice President for Institutional Advancement, we have made some significant, um, changes. Some of these positions were already in the organizational chart, but were, are either vacant or unfunded, and so we're hoping, uh, we've made the request through the budget process to fund these particular positions, and they're all, um, listed there. They exist in the, in the chart, they just aren't funded, and so hopefully, if the budget allows this fall, starting September one, um, and we'll, we can discuss it through the budget process whether we will be able to fund every single one of them, but, um, the idea is that we're now organizing that organizational chart in that order. Um, in the human resources area, uh, which does report to me, right now, we only have one administrator in that department, which is our director, and in the case of her absence, um, there is no administrator in charge, and therefore, for that reason, we're adding an assistant director, uh, and promoting Ms. Hoya Vidal to Assistant Director. She has the longevity and the, and the knowledge and the training to take that position, and so, um, I'm open for questions. All of the directors are here, all of the vice presidents are here, except for Dr. Tejina, who's on vacation, but is available by phone. Should you all have any questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Delgado, I have a second by Mrs. Ramos, Ramos, sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, I, Russi, I don't agree with one. I agree with all the rest, but not one. So how do I do that? Do I vote no for everything?
That would be up to you. You, you could, yeah, the, the motion on the table is to approve of,
All of them.
it as it is, which is all of them, and if you don't agree with all of them, then the...
Then it's a no. Okay, so I'm gonna no. So, for the record, for the record, and, uh, both of them passes, so they have one, two, three, four, five, six, yes. Thank you. Next item we have is five B, approval of dated deferred maintenance construction projects. Mr. Reta?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ramirez, uh, Tessa Vila, VP of Finance and Administration, for the record. Uh, the next item that we have, uh, for board consideration is, uh, uh, we are requesting the approval to, uh, add two projects to the deferred maintenance, uh, projects. Uh, the first one is the exterior repairs to building P fourteen. Um, and this is currently the building that we are currently finalizing for the Imaginarium, and, uh, building P thirty-four, thirty-five, uh, also exterior repairs, and this is the current, uh, offices for the marketing and external affairs, uh, offices. Uh, originally, P thirty-four, thirty-five had already been brought to the board, uh, we do need to do some, uh, um, porch repairs to that building, uh, and obviously, uh, exterior paint, uh, touch-up. Um, however, uh, we were trying to address, uh, other projects, we had moved it down the list. We're now asking to bring it back up, uh, for consideration. Uh, a- as far as the, uh, P fourteen building, uh, the original work that, uh, was approved by the board did not include any work on the outside of the building. We have pretty much finalized all the interior work, uh, the last item that was pending was the elevator, and that has been finalized. Uh, we are just working on the, uh, uh, fiber connection to that building. Um, the Imaginarium is, is just waiting for us, uh, to, uh, finalize some of those items. However, uh, as we were doing the inspection of the exterior of the building, uh, we, uh, realized that it, work that is needed is not just paint, we do have to do some replacement of, uh, some of the, uh, porch areas that are, uh, now, as, as we reviewed, uh, could be a safety concern. So, uh, we are asking that the board, uh, allow us to use five hundred thousand from the deferred maintenance to address these two projects, uh, at this time. Uh, we're also asking the board to approve the competitive seal proposal procurement method as a method that will provide the college the best value for securing the construction contracts.
So move.
So I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Delgado, a second by, uh, Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? Now, I know the people, yes, sir. Mr. Muir?
I'm sorry, Madam President, to interrupt, but there are actually two recommendations on this agenda, and one is to approve the deferred maintenance, uh, projects for the buildings. The other one involves the selection of a, a procurement method, and that's the competitive sealed proposal procurement method. The board has to find that that method provides the best value for the college to secure the construction contracts, and it's best to say that on the record. So I would recommend that the motion, uh, be to approve the use of five hundred thousand from the deferred maintenance fund for exterior repairs to the buildings P fourteen and P thirty-four, thirty-five, and to approve a competitive sealed proposal procurement method as the method that provides the best value to the college for securing construction of these projects.
Okay, so, Chair, recognize Mrs. Ramos?
I have a question. Wouldn't it not be better to make two motions, that way each one stands alone, and in the event that, you know, you come back or whatever?
I don't, I don't think it, it makes much difference, because what you're doing is you're approving the, the project, the, the repairs to the building using these funds, and then you're going to have to approve the construction that, and so, but you could, I mean, you could do it in...
May I, may I have your blessing to do that?
Sure, you know, that'd be fine, yeah, so, that, that's nothing wrong with it.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to amend my motion, uh, to approve the use of the five hundred thousand dollars from the deferred maintenance fund for exterior repair, repairs to buildings P fourteen and P thirty-four, thirty-five.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Judge? Judge Martinez?
Judge, can you repeat that?
Uh, I will second that motion, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
That was made.
Okay, so, Mr. Delgado made a motion to, uh, approve the deferred maintenance fund, second by Judge Martinez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chair, recognize Mrs. Ramos?
I make the motion to accept the competitive seal proposal procurement method as a method that provides a good value to the college for securing construction contracts for these projects.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second, second. I have a second by Ms., uh, Leando and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reta. I, I do see that we have our executive director and the president of the Imaginarium in our, in our audience, I don't know if you all want to say something? Is that okay, Mr. Muir?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, uh, Dr. Ramirez. Thank you very much for supporting us. We've been patient and can't wait to come to LC. We have so many interesting projects, and no idea that what we're about to do with LC is, uh, we want to attract as many kids as we want. Those are your future, your future students. Like I said on my previous presentation, um, LC will be a great option, because you're gonna bring kids nine, ten years old, imagining going to the casing, going to the library, getting familiar with the campus. That's gonna be helping us, and we wanna work together also in the continuing education project to allow our parents to continue their education while, you know, we have kids in the Imaginarium. We're not a taker facility, but that is something that we can work together, and, uh, we can't wait to show you the dino dig that we're gonna do. It's a, like a twenty-five, twenty-seven foot, uh, dinosaur that we're gonna bury on the ground, where kids can go and excavate and learn about fossils, and it's related to, to their curriculum at our different schools. We have now more members from, uh, uh, LISD, we have a board member from LC, of course, Mr. Cepeda, who I'm glad to hear that he's doing better, our Vice President, and also we have a Tamiu as well, a part of the Imaginarium, because we work together like that. And, uh, now back to, uh, Mrs. Muir.
Again, thank you so much for having this approval done. We're so appreciative to you all. It is something that we've been waiting for, like Mr. Reta says, eh, every day, my staff asks, and we count down the days, and, and of course, you know, as we're getting ready for our move, I'm writing grants to help when you have college students that are parents. We're working on a homework assistance program that we will provide to the parents free of charge, because we did write a grant for that, so if a parent is attending classes here, and they want to leave their children that are in kinder through fifth grade, we will provide homework, uh, assistance for them, and then, of course, we're having a tutoring program that we will also help the students during math and science for grade levels, second through fifth grade. So many things that we're planning for being an asset to the college. So again, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Your item is coming up, but a little bit later. Um, the next item is five C, approval of purchase of computers for internal refresh program. Mr. Rella and Mr. Albert Chavez.
Good evening, members of the board, Madam President to the board, President of the College and Administration. Uh, for the record, Albert Chavez, Associate Vice President for Information Technology. Uh, for this particular item, we're requesting approval for the purchase of computers, uh, for a refresh for our employees of the campus. Uh, this will be done, uh, through Dell directly using DIR contract, uh, TSO thirty-seven sixty-three. The total amount for this order is two hundred forty-seven thousand seventeen with twenty-six cents. The order consists of a hundred and fifty-eight, uh, computers, and it's a combination of laptops with docks, and then regular desktops, and then there's three tablets on, on the order. And for this particular expenditure, uh, eh, we're using funds available in the IT department that were already allocated for, uh, the refresh program.
Chair, recognize Mrs. Ramos?
Mr. Chavez, is there any way that, uh, along with a master plan that we are considering, uh, in, in the coming months, right? That the technology could be incorporated into that master plan, maybe like a five-year? You're beginning with the computers, you're beginning to buy computers, and I'd like to see that, you know, five years down the road, wherever we may be, and we're all still here, then we've already known that we started way back in twenty twenty-three, uh, that master plan that we purchased them, and how long they will last, or how long they're gonna be updated and so forth. So, I don't know, Dr. Ramirez also was, uh, thinking about that, uh, as I'm, I was looking over the, the purchases, uh, because we, we start with, from the get-go with, you know, what we should have done in the past, right? Uh, had a master plan for the technology itself, so, I don't know, I, I was just at, wondering if we would be able to consider that.
May I respond?
Yeah.
So, one of the things that Mr. Chavez has instituted is a, eh, we, we call it a refresh program, um, and so, uh, it's part of the, the property inventory process as well, um, I don't know, do you want to explain it, Albert?
Yes, uh, what we're doing, and, and I can present this once we have it finalized, we are working on, on standard operating procedure for refresh program. And basically, uh, and the, it's still being finalized, but on that particular operating procedure, uh, we're going to identify that every full-time employee of this college will receive a computer every four years, that will be replaced through the central IT budget, and those employees will have a choice of either desktop, uh, or a laptop with a dock. Uh, we will continue working, like Dr. Ramirez mentioned, with our inventory program. We've been working with them to, uh, clean up the list. Uh, so that way, everybody in this institution that's a full-time employee will have a computer that's, uh, four years or newer. So the idea in, in this program is that, uh, every year, we will identify any, any computer that's hitting that threshold and will be replaced before it becomes over the four years.
And so...
That's our goal.
There are two, there are two ways to, that we're going to try to monitor this. One is, is through the, obviously, the refresh program, but he's creating what's called a standard administrative procedure for the refresh process, so that every employee understands this is the process we're gonna follow. Just because you want a new computer doesn't mean you're gonna get one, right? It's, it's, there's a process, and so, um, using the inventory process through that, that, that standard, uh, administrative procedure, then we can plan budgetarily ahead of time to know, well, next year, we're gonna have, you know, a hundred computers come up for refresh, refresh. The following year, we're only gonna have fifty, that there, you know, so we'll know how many, uh, ahead of time, how to plan for that budget. Now, it will be part of the master plan as well. We, we had discussed that, uh, Dr. Gasol, and Mr. Rella, and myself, what, as we're creating the RFP for the master planners, is, that has to be included, because that goes along with, what if we have to tear down a building, and it was a, and, and in that particular building, we have all these, uh, and I'm not saying we are, but it's an example. Uh, what are we gonna do with all the computers in there? And where are they gonna go, and what, how do you dispose of them, and, or are they not disposable yet? I mean, maybe they haven't reached their limit, what are we gonna do with them? And so, all, all of that becomes part of the planning process. The other thing is... The other thing is if we have to build a new building or we, or remodel a building. What happens to the, do they have, since we have a lot of very old buildings? Are the connections in those buildings up to standard for the new computer? Initiatives that we, the new hardware initiatives that we have to institute. So it is part of the master plan. That we're hoping to go on our P here pretty soon, um. But in the immediate need, as we go through the process of the master plan, we're doing this other. Way to track all of our computer systems.
And if I can add just one last item, um, and we've been doing, of course, running the numbers and, and, and being financially responsible. So one of the reasons that we decided to do away with the lease program is that it's just not the least payment that we have to make. When we do a lease agreement, we're also required to provide, uh, insurance for those computers. So our insurance policy. Those numbers were also pretty high. So if we do buy the computers instead of leasing them, we're also saving on having to put in. On the insurance policy for the campus, which was a requirement for the lease agreement.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. So. Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghead.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Has joined us. So do I have a motion? Do I have a motion by Mr. Legado? Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms., uh, Mrs. Ramos and Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. Next item we have is five D. Approval of amendment to the commercial lease agreement between Laredo Col- College. And the Laredo Children's Museum Incorporated, doing business as Imaginarium of South Texas, Mr. Vella.
Yes, uh, board members, uh, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration for the record. Uh, this next item is requesting that the board approve an amendment to the, uh, lease, uh, between Laredo College and. Uh, the Imaginarium of South Texas. Uh, the items that we are amending on the contract are listed on the agenda item, which is revisions to paragraph one point one. And that is the description of the property that is being leased. Uh, and the, uh. Amendment that is being done is, uh, just adding the. Uh, approximately eight hundred square feet of newly developed. Unimprovised property that is situated, uh, right behind, right behind the building. Uh, P fourteen, uh, this will be the location of the, uh. Canopy that will house the dinosaur dig exhibit. Uh, and then the second item is, uh. Paragraph two point one, which, uh, references the term of the agreement. Uh, the original term of this agreement started September first of, oh, should have started September first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, however, because the, uh, Imaginarium has not been able to take possession of the building. Uh, they are now requesting that the, uh, term of the agreement begin, uh. January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, originally, we talked about. Having the building available September first of twenty twenty-three, however, with the recent developments of coming to work on some items. On the exterior, uh, we're pushing that date to January twenty twenty-four. Uh, with an ending date of December twenty thirty-four. Uh, and then the final item. Would be paragraph or the addition of paragraph eight point four. Within the, if the exhibit for the dinosaur dig and, and you do have a copy. Of the drawings, uh, on your packet. Um, I do apologize, they're kind of small too. So, but you can see there, as, uh, Mr. Perez mentioned, uh, we will, uh, they will have a. An exhibit that is approximately around twenty-nine feet long. Uh, and this will be used, uh, for the children that is being.
And that's in front of. The building, right? It's on the side. Sure, yes. It's a little to the side. It'll be, it'll be behind the actual P fourteen facility. Um, kind of off to the side a little bit, but in front of the BPA. The parking lot will be in the middle. And that construction starts.
Uh, so we, we, we need to go out for bits. We'll post a request, uh, for various proposals. Uh, so we're anticipating that that property may take about a month and then right after the construction just started. Uh, we're projecting maybe four to six months, uh, the whole process.
On the exterior, on the exterior, the dino dig they're doing. Right, they're, they're, they're doing this project. But for us, the contract we, the, what we asked you for on the previous item is for the exterior. That's what we're hoping to get started. As soon as possible. Chair recognizes Mr. Ranghead.
Thank you, ma'am. Just real quick on this, I know, I know that we're working on making sure that this happens, but, um, do we have a plan? And I know our environmental center is also gonna be under construction, but are we gonna have a plan to be able to? I remember back in the day, uh, we, we used to have schools bring in kids and everything. Do we have a plan already in place so we could be able to, once this opens up and then our environmental center opens up? To be able to guide the, or not guide, bring in these kids? Like, is there already a plan being in place to be able to have this? You know, for, for, for our future kids?
Yes, Mrs. Vetta.
I think it's important for the community to know, so then that way in the future, you know, I hope. You know, LC reaches out to both school districts and, and the surrounding area.
Earlier, she, she explained what all she was gonna do, but she'll go ahead and.
Sorry, I was working Madam Chair and just got out.
My name is Dawn, I'm the executive director of the Imaginarium. And what we plan to do is calling it a two-for-one. So what we want to do is where the dino dig will be one of the main attractions and this is why we're, we're doing this because. We're moving from the mall where we have a lot of walk traffic or mall traffic. And over here, we're kind of concerned. And so what we're going to promote is you come to the dino dig, but then you get to go visit the alligators.
Great.
So we're looking at a two-for-one and always, uh, reciprocate to where. We talk to the campuses and we let them know when you're coming to the Imaginarium. Instead of say paying, you know, whatever the amount is and, and we'll visit with, uh, the Lamar Rooney Vergara, uh, director. And then, uh, put a price for it and say, okay, so you're gonna come to the Imaginarium, you visit the Imaginarium. And then hopefully we can use the trolley or the buses takes them to the environmental science and then vice versa.
Great.
So we're always going to, uh, plan together. And then when we sell it to the school districts, we're going to sell it to them as a two-for-one. So yes, it's going to be. Uh, a joint effort.
You answered my question. That's all I wanted to know and I apologize. How would that work?
Madam Chair, ma'am, also.
Chair, this is Dr. Ramírez.
And we're gonna piggyback on both of those things to try to indoctrinate children very early on about college life.
Yes.
At Laredo College.
And one of the things also, and, and I apologize, it's actually a three-for-one because we also want to partner with. Laredo College to do tours. Uh, what we want to do is we want to be able to have the children come and visit the college. And like Mr. Perez says. The sooner we indoctrinate them to tell them, hey, this is the college, this is. Where you come and you, you make your future. And so this is what we want to do. Where they can possibly spend the majority of the day here by going to the Imaginarium, the environmental science. Touring the college and then eating at the col- uh, the case and center to where they experience a little bit of. College life, if I can say it that way. But, but it, but in other words, it is going to be, and, and I apologize. It should have been a three, a, a three, uh.
But it, it's very true. I, I remember I took those trips when I was in elementary and. And we did do the environmental and then we did do the walkover here at LC. That's the reason why I'm, I'm kind of like. Waiting for this to happen because I think the kids would be able to.
And, and that's one of the things that we're selling to the campuses is, you know, they're going to be learning, but they're also going to be seeing their future. So, uh, again, we're looking at the synergy between the college, the environmental science and the environmental. I'm sorry, as the Imaginarium, as something that is going to only grow as. We get older here. And so, yes, everything is already in the works to, to work together.
Thank you, ma'am.
As we continue to evolve the historical aspect of the college. And we start to unveil later this fall, some of the other additional things that. Are gonna be available to our visitors. Um, and, and to the kids, the historical aspect of the college itself and how we involve that in. The campus walkthroughs or, or campus visits and, and so we're. We're trying to make it our, our own little walkable city. Um, and incorporate a, a huge historical aspect of. You know, who we are and what we were originally placed here for and, and how we be, how the, our veterans' walkway will unfold is. Is gonna be another additional piece to this.
We do have the full support of both superintendents and Laredo IC. We met with Dr. Rios. It was her full support and also Mr. Bonsais. I just want you to know that, that they're committed. They told us whatever you all want, you get. So we're gonna be hitting both districts with filters. Because we want to bring a lot of kids over here. That's our goal.
Thank you. Uh, another thing that was mentioned was that. They're gonna partner with, uh, parents that are taking night classes. And if they need to have kids come do their homework, they can. Tutoring, they can be at the Imaginarium, that's one. Yes.
The Imaginarium received two separate grants, one for homework assistance and then another one for tutoring students. In math and science, which that's one of the subjects that the students are struggling a lot. And so, again. Uh, repeating myself, what we're looking is partnering with some of the parents that are taking classes in the evening. Or even in the day, but you know, that's when the kids are in school. But mostly when the students. Uh, the, the parents are at school that they bring their children to us, drop them off. They have peace of mind that the children would be safe, but they're also, we're gonna help them with homework and then, you know, they need the tutoring work with that also. So again, a lot of things that I'm already prepping to come and be part of y'all's family. We, we've been going back and forth on when we're moving and I wanted to move in September and I cried when I was told. That it wasn't, but it's okay, you know, uh, waiting is good.
They'll be here before we know it.
We have some fencing also around the, the exhibit. So that the kids are, you know, protected, we'll have cameras also as well. Uh, we're gonna have the roof, because like Thomas Rio, I mean, the kids will not go outside if it's not under roof.
Right.
So we're trying to, trying to work on the mist also, so that we can have, you know, a little bit of mist. So that the kids can be comfortable while they can.
I, I'm writing a grant for that, e- either mist or those, uh, water coolers. So Laredo is too hot to not have something like that, right?
I don't think you need to write the grant. You should send them pictures of. Of how hard it is. Just a screenshot of our weekly, uh.
Oh, yeah, forecast.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Legado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve of the amendment to the commercial lease agreement with the Imaginarium of South Texas. Authorize the college president to execute the amendment and authorize the college president to approve. The dinosaur dig exhibit construction, contract and design and construction plans before the construction of the exhibit begins.
So I have a, a motion from Mr. Legado, second by, uh, Mrs. Ramos. And who else did I hear? I heard this, uh, Mr. Ranghead. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vetta. Five E is approval of revisions to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Laredo College academic calendar. Dr. Solis.
Good evening, board. Jessica Trevino.
I think it's me, Dr. Solis. Sorry.
Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President for Enrollment Management for the record. Um, so this evening, we're seeking your approval to, uh, proof a revision on the academic calendar. Based on previous discussions and suggestions, we have made several changes. You did receive the revised version. Um, in your packet and you're also seeing it on the screen. And I can go, uh, down rather quickly, but, uh, uh, for the fall twenty twenty-three, the first revision is to add the graduation date on there. Of December fifteen, twenty twenty-three, so that our students are well aware of that ahead of time. And, uh, we removed the last working day, uh, because it, it is implied with the Christmas holiday right there. And we want to keep this one a little bit more focused towards academics. Our last working day will be, uh, displayed in our holiday schedule. So that, that's, uh, for the fall semester. Further down, you see that in the fall semester, we took, uh, some of your suggestions and we incorporated the first eight-week term. And the second eight-week term schedule for the students to be well aware of the dates respectively, depending on what session they are enrolled for. So, um, again, very important academic dates, first class day, census day, midterm, last day to drop with a W. Uh, last class day, final exams, and of course, when their grades will be due for both respective sessions. Um, further in the, in the, uh, changes, uh, this is where, um. The, the revision happens for the first class day of the winter semester. For actually both winter semester and rain semester, the request is to move the start date. Two days into the week, which is, uh, instead of starting on Monday, December eighteen. We are requesting to start on Wednesday, December twentieth. This will not affect the end date. We are instead accounting for both Saturdays at the end of that week. Uh, to count for the two days, primarily because, uh, based off of a NASPA recommendation. Because winter semester is part of the, uh, financially packaged for spring. Whenever the, we finish a term in the fall semester, we have to run the students' GPAs and the end-of-term process. If the student loses eligibility for financial aid, currently, as the academic calendar is, we're giving them one-day notice. That their financial aid will no longer cover their winter semester class. By moving the date two days, we're now giving the student technically four days. To make payment plan arrangements for that winter semester class while they face their, um, GPA to receive financial aid again. That's essentially the, the main reason to, to give them ample time.
With means that we'll have staff working during that period to make sure that students are, have accessibility and. And are gonna get serviced if that happens.
Yes, so we're still here, uh, for the first class day of winter semester and or main semester. So going down to spring twenty twenty-four, um, again, we added, um, we actually made a correction on the last class day. The original, um, last class day had May third and fourth, but the official last class day is May fourth. Um, and the graduation date, um, remains as tentative because it is pending, uh, arena confirmation of availability. But we are looking at May eleventh of twenty twenty-four. Previously, it was in there as May ten, twenty twenty-four. Um, and same, um, example as the fall semester for the spring twenty twenty-four. The first eight-week and the second eight-week term are also, uh, the dates included on there. And again, last but not least, the main semester, which I've just explained to you as well for the two days.
So I have a motion by Mr. Ranghead and I have a second by Mr. Legado. Any discussion? Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Uh, Miss Trevino. Going back to the, uh, to the top, uh, can we go back to the very first, the very top of the, of the revision? So, so fall twenty twenty-three, that little box is applicable to everybody. Other than the academics, like dual and other special programs, right?
This would be the official academic calendar.
So, so, but this is this, in other words. The, uh, duals are not gonna follow the eight-week, eighty terms or anything like that. They're gonna follow fall twenty twenty-three, correct?
Essentially, yes, because we have decided to keep our dual enrollment program under the sixteen-week model for this fall semester. To see how that works. We thought it was too quick of a transition to just switch them to the eight weeks because we also have to enable discussions with them. Regarding their academic calendar if we do move on to the eight-week pattern.
And is that highly being considered?
Um, it's, it's conversations. We are working, um, for instance, that we've already had the conversation with Freer and Zapata. To see if they want to pilot. We do have some students that are doing enrollment students that currently take eight-week courses, but it's not everyone. And we're wanting to pilot a certain group so that we can do a study and compare both the sixteen-week term and then the eight-week term.
Yeah, I, it's specifically for like ninth grade, uh, it. As eight weeks is just. Too quick, too fast, too soon. They're getting used to something different and. I would really make sure that we pilot and that we, we check off all of our boxes and everything because I've seen the kids. And I see how they have to go through procedures. And even following this particular top part of schedule. Is, is difficult because then one, remember that once they finish the class with you all. They still are in the class with the teacher and they're getting a grade for that particular. A lot of kids understand, they say, well, it's a freebie because I finished. A lot of kids understand, they say, well, it's a freebie because I finished by, let's say, the last class day is December the ninth. We don't leave school till, uh, almost December the eighteenth.
Right.
So a lot of kids are like, yay, we have two weeks of free stuff. But that's part of the academics in the, in the school itself, so.
Yes, and part of the conversations do include to account for those weeks where, um, the district has started, but we haven't. To actually even possibly consider a TSI intervention. There is about a two-week period when the district str- district starts before we do. To possibly, uh, partner with our instruction team to do like a quick summer bridge so that they retake TSI. To actually keep them engaged. We are utilizing also, just so off topic with the academic calendar, but we are using those dates. Where we've finished with our, our courses, but they're still in school to actually schedule our recruitment preview dates. So that we bring them to campus so that we also keep them engaged and busy. So yes, we're pi- piloting all sorts of conversations right now to make sure that we account for that.
And as long as we, we, uh, address the different grade, because remember like.
Yes.
The main campuses are one thing. Then you have the, the ninth grade campuses, that's another thing. And we, we have to address those because the ages really matter, you know? You can't expect a fourteen-year-old to just go into, uh, eight-week mode like right away. Porositos, like I feel really bad.
Right, right. Just the, the eight-week just model. Actually, USD went to it before we did. Uh, and so that's a district choice. It's not our choice. If the district wants to do an eight-week model for a particular program, we're gonna, we're gonna make it available to them. It's not gonna be our decision where to transition them fully. So I, I just wanted to get that. I mean, we're, we're doing it for, for college kids. Most community colleges are gonna have been piloting it. Gilcore has already been doing it. They've had huge success with it. We're going, and several community colleges are going full-blown eight-week this fall. So. We're, I, I mean, we're, we're kind of in line with what other community colleges are doing. But we're also gonna start to see, I think, more ISDs go to the eight-week model.
And, and for clarification, there is one class. Like in the ninth grade, that is an eight-week class, but it's an elective. So, just, yeah, the kids that are there go for the eight weeks. They understand that they're gonna switch in the middle of the semester. But thi- this is, I mean, this is academics, so.
That's for the academic per- the academic calendar purposes. That's why we're using both calendars on there. The full sixteen-week and the eight-week, um.
Okay. I have a chair make a motion to approve the revisions to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I, I already had a motion and a second. Oh, okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is five F, approval of board member travel and reimbursement of reasonable travel expenses. As for Laredo College Board Policy BBG Local. Board members' compensation and expenses. And BBH Local Board Members Conventions, Conferences and Workshops. Director Minnietta Martinez.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, thank you. The, um. This particular conference is not on the list of approved conferences. However, in light of the recent legislative session. Conclusion and all of the changes that were made to higher education. And TASP being our policy management organization. Um, I think it is imperative that we have, uh, board representation at this meeting. Um, and, um, I know that our attorneys will be present at the meeting as well, but. I do think that it is imperative that we have representation and therefore I would like for the board to consider approving. That we have representation and approving the expenditures for board members that choose to attend.
I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos. I have a second by Mr. Rangell. Any discussion?
Amen.
None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we go into executive session, I'm gonna go back to item number four. Introduction of new Laredo College Police Chief, Dr. Garmitas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and, and thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I do, uh, a, a few of you have already met our new police chief. This has been a, um, a long process for the college to find a new police chief and. Uh, we went many years with an interim chief and we're very grateful to all of them. We're extremely grateful to Chief Donald Hale. Who, who really has helped us through this process, um, for the last, I don't know, eight months. Um, he took control of our, our police department and, and has done an outstanding job with them. But during those eight months, we went through this process again. The committee was made up of all of our administrative team, uh, and. The selection came down to three individuals. They interviewed them. They made their recommendations to me. I made, I went ahead and interviewed three candidates, um, and. In that process, I agreed with, um, the vice president's recommendation. To select our new police chief, Chief Jose Hernandez, who comes to us with, from the sheriff's department. But also who comes to us with a great deal of experience in many areas. And so. With your permission, I would like for him to come to the podium and say a little bit about himself so that all of you get to meet him. Um, we're real excited that he's here. He started on Monday and we're thinking, we, we've had him going all over the place and so. Um, Chief, welcome to, to our team.
Madam Chair, I'm the board president, um. Yes. Okay, uh, okay. Um, I'm excited to be here. I appreciate everybody in this room. I spoke to you briefly. I started my career in law enforcement over twenty years ago, prior to that, I was military. Uh, this was overseas, uh, came back and continued my, uh, law enforcement career. I completed two ranks. Uh, put myself to school and, um. I eventually obtained a master's degree at Texas Department International University in criminal justice. Um. I started from a road jater to a law enforcement officer, to a supervisor, to sergeant, lieutenant. I went up all the way to jail commander. So, um, twenty years, um, experience plus and, um. I hope that, uh, we can all come together. I, I'm, I'm happy to be now in the LC family.
Can you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, for the record.
That's okay.
Chief Potellans.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome.
Welcome to Laredo College. Is anybody? Any comments?
We, we will, we will let you all know. We're working on when we're gonna have his official swearing-in and so we'll let you all know to. Hopefully, all of you can join us for that. That exciting day for him and for the rest of our, our Palomino family, so, um, we're thrilled that he's here and we're real grateful. Um, and I'll explain to you all. Why he was, why he was a little late, but, but that's okay, Chief. I hope everything turned out okay.
Yes.
Congratulations again and welcome, welcome.
Oh, yes, well, do we have somebody? Yeah, we, we'll take a picture. Let's take a picture with the chief. I'm sorry.
The next item is executive session. We have item six A, legal, legal. Level three grievance hearing filed by Laredo College faculty member as per board policy DGVA local. Personnel management relations. Employee grievances, closed section pursuant to Texas Government Code's. Sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Six B is closed section discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code's section. Five five one dot zero seven one with Laredo College Attorney concerning. A condemnation proceeding filed in the Webb County Court at Law Number One. By the State of Texas involving real property within the geographic boundaries of Laredo College District. Six C is closed session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code's section. Five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four concerning Laredo College President's. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual evaluation. Six D, closed session discussion pursuant to Texas Government Code's sections. Five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four concerning Laredo College President's employment contract. So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos. I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, we're gonna go into executive session. The time is six fifty-four. And the board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Of the Texas Government Code to discuss agenda items six A, six B, six C and six D. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I motion that the grievance did not appear for his grievance and move that the level three grievance be denied by default for nonappearance.
So I have a motion by Mr. Legado, I have a second by Mr. Rangel.
And Mr. Martinez.
Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven B condemnation proceeding filed in the Webb County Board of Law number one by the state of Texas involving real property within the geographic boundaries of Laredo College District. No action was taken. Seven C Laredo College Presidents 2022-2023 Annual Evaluation.
Madam Chair, I move that the board trustees approve and adopt the board's annual evaluation of the Laredo College President.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Legado, I have a second from Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seventy Laredo College Presidents Employment Contract. I have chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the board trustees extend the college president's employment contract by three additional years for a total of five years and that the compensation under the contract be increased as discussed in executive session.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Legado. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is number eight, President's Remarks, Dr. Minnie Taramitas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, trustees, and to the team that's still here. Thank you all for being here. I really appreciate the the level of confidence and support that all of you have given me and have displayed this evening with the extension of my contract. It means a lot. It means a lot to to me and my family, but but to my my LC family as well, the confidence that you all are displaying in in our leadership. And I say our leadership because my the administrative team that my that I'm working with right now, my team is incredibly dedicated to the to the work that we're doing. They're incredibly committed to the continuation and expansion of our college and this isn't a one person job. This is definitely an entire group of people pushing and struggling every single day to do the best that they possibly can, to do the greatest good that we possibly can for our communities. And so your confidence in me is truly cherished. I feel very blessed and certainly very honored to be leading Laredo College and the direction that we're headed for the next five years for sure. And so thank you all very, very much for continuing to ignite the excellence in our college, in our students, in our employees, and in our community. And with that, I know it's late and everybody wants to go home, but I could go on for forever. But I do want to share with you before before you all leave, I did share with you a book. This is our book for this coming year. It's called Purpose Ignited. Every decision we make, every move that we make on this campus, every training, every outreach, everything we're doing is we're doing it with a purpose. Our single most purpose right now is our students and building our student body population on both of our campuses, expanding our programs and continuing to be of service to the people that deserve it the most. And so I hope you will join us in reading this book. The author will be he will do our one of our training for our leadership team on July 31st. You're welcome to join us for that. And then and then she will be our keynote speaker for our convocation this fall in August. And so you all will get to meet her. She's an amazing woman. And we've created, we put together, the team has really put together an incredible program for this fall for convocation. We're excited about the new year. We're excited about our freshman class coming in and certainly grateful to so, so many people who made this year great. Our donors, our community people, our business partners, our advisory teams, all of you, and certainly all the the folks here who believe in what we're all trying to do together.
Thank you, Dr. Taramitas. Next time I have is the next meeting and upcoming events. There's several. Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023 at 6:00 p.m., vocational nursing pining ceremony. Thursday, August 3rd, 8:00 a.m., orientation, South Campus. Thursday, August 3rd at 6:00 p.m., Special Board of Trustees Meeting, Tax Pro Tax Rates. Thursday, August 10th, 2023, 5:30 p.m., tentative first public hearing for tax rates. Friday, August 11th, 2023, summer commencement. Monday, August 14th, 2023, 8:00 a.m., convocation. Thursday, August 24th, 2023, 5:30 p.m., tentative second public hearing. Thursday, August 24th, 2023, 6:00 p.m., regular board meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may, August 11th, our summer commencement will be here on campus in the Myra Legion, just for the record.
Any question? So I have a motion from Mr. Rangel, a second from Mr. Legado. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good evening.
Thank you, everybody.